Welcome to the April 8th, 2020 Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School Public Hearing for the Approval of the Proposed Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year 2021. This meeting is being recorded and held remotely via Zoom teleconferencing per Governor Baker's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, "The public will not be allowed to physically access this meeting." However, public comment was made available via Zoom teleconferencing as well as through email in advance of the meeting start time and/or prior to public comment. Is there any public comment?
I did not receive any public comment. Lisa, did you?
No.
Okay, none being heard. We're going to move forward with a roll call for attendance. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. LaBella?
Here.
Mr. Tucker? Mr. Irving?
Here.
Dr. Testaverde?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Ms. True?
Here.
Mr. Ficcheri? Mr. LaSage? The Chair, Mr. Murphy is present. We need a motion to close the public hearing on the FY21 budget.
Solved.
Second?
Second.
Need a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage? We need a motion to adopt the FY21 budget in the amount of $26,864,456.
Don't move.
Who said that? When you make a motion, please say who you are.
Don't move. Tony LaSage.
Okay.
Second. Gary James.
Thank you. We need a roll call vote for approval. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage? We need a motion to approve a capital assessment to the communities in the amount of $695,000.
Don't move. Tony LaSage.
Second. Mr. Irving. Roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage? Need a motion to approve school choice expenditures in the amount of $50,820.
Don't move. Tony LaSage.
Second. Mr. Irving. Roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage? Okay, now we need a motion for adjournment.
Don't move. Tony LaSage.
Second. Ms. True.
Okay, we need a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're done with the budget meeting. Was going to move on to the regular school committee meeting. We're going to move on to the regular school committee meeting. Welcome to the April 8th, 2020 Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and held remotely via Zoom teleconferencing. Per Governor Baker's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, "The public will not be allowed to physically access this meeting." However, public comment was made available via Zoom teleconferencing as well as through email in advance of the meeting start time and prior to public comment. Need a roll call attendance for this meeting. Mr. Early?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Irving? Yeah.
Dr. Testaverde?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Present.
Ms. True? Mr. Ficcheri? Mr. LaSage?
Yep.
My Chair is here also. All right. Pledge of Allegiance. Does anybody have a flag?
I know.
Not today.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
One sec.
Oh, wait a minute. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Right. Pledge of Allegiance.
With a flag.
The United States of America. The Republic of the Republic.
Which stands one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, infinite. Liberty, liberty. Justice.
Somebody's going to have to help me fold that afterwards. Is there any public comment?
Didn't get any.
Okay, none being heard. Let's move forward. The approval of minutes for the budget workshop vote, for the budget workshop, the approval of minutes.
Don't move. Tony LaSage.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Need a roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
LaBella? Mr. Irving?
Abstained.
Dr. Testaverde?
Abstained.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Abstained.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
The March 11th, 2020 minutes of the regular school committee meeting, need a motion to approve.
Motion?
Don't move. Go ahead, Lisa.
Second. Motion, Lisa O'Connor?
Second. Tony LaSage.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Abstained.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Abstained.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage? Need a motion for the March Treasuries Report?
Don't move. Scott Wood.
Just a second.
Tony LaSage.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. True?
Yes.
Mr. LaSage?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to old business, the school committee self-evaluation. We wanted to get this in for this meeting, but due to the circumstances, we haven't received very many. So we'd like to set a new date for May 1st, get those emailed into Lisa. If you don't have it, you can find it on Google Classroom on your iPad where the, where the school committee packet is. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I just wanted to say, I did mine today, and it's very easy and very convenient to do it online.
Thank you. All right, so that's May 1st. Those are due by email to Lisa. There's no student representative report. We'll move on to the superintendency. Maureen.
Chairman, members of the committee, thank you so much for making this meeting tonight. Before you today, I have personnel action for two math instructors and attendance makeup monitors. Also, I tried to make my report somewhat short because a lot obviously has been going on. I wanted to let you know that right now there was not ELA testing for the March MCAS for grade 10 students. Additionally, accountability will be changed this year for attendance for MCAS, and we're still. On March 12th, the day after our school committee meeting, I was asked to draw.
Breaking up. Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Did you guys hear me?
Okay.
It's lit up.
Okay. On March 12th, the day after our school committee meeting, I was asked to attend a meeting with the Mayor of Amesbury to discuss concerns about the coronavirus. Before I left to attend that meeting, the Whittier Tech administrative team decided to be proactive and plan for a possible school closure, and they began to develop. The team met for approximately three hours. After school on Thursday, there was an emergency cluster chair meeting to review the administration's remote learning plan. All administrators and cluster chairs were able to discuss and begin the plan for a possible school closure. At the end of the day, on March 12th, an announcement was made to all students and staff reminding them to bring home their iPads and chargers. On the evening of March 12th, I received a phone call from the Superintendent of Haverhill about a possible case of coronavirus and one of our students being exposed. The decision was made to close for Friday, March 13th. On March 13th, there was a teleconference meeting with the commission, with all the superintendents in the state. At this time, it was left up for individual districts as to whether they would close their schools or not. Immediately after that, all members of the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable and the Merrimack Valley Superintendent Roundtable met via Zoom. It was discussed by both groups, and all closed for two weeks. On Sunday, March 15th, Governor Baker closed all schools in the Commonwealth for three weeks or until April 6th. We opened the school on Monday, March 16th, for staff and students to pick up any of their personal wants, and now being closed for three weeks. On Monday, March 16th, the administrative team and the cluster chairs met again, finalized the remote learning plan. The district was able to begin working with our students on March 18th. I cannot express the gratitude I have for our faculty and staff. When faced with this adversity, everyone came together to do what was best for students. They have been, there have been some adjustments to the plan as we've moved forward, and there will continue to be adjustments, but everyone was more than willing to adapt. One of the biggest concerns was making sure our students were fed. I want to thank Kara Cosmason, her work to make sure our students were taken care of. Also, all of our district superintendents have worked together to ensure that all the students in our 11 cities and towns are able to receive access to breakfast and lunch. Kevin Williams has done a phenomenal job sharing information on Connected and on our website. We have tried to communicate consistently and often so our Whittier Tech community is aware of our information, concerns, and expectations on remote learning during our school closure. All the information is posted on our website. I want to thank Bob Hardy and the maintenance team for their hard work in making sure Whittier Tech is as clean as it possibly can be. Bob Hardy has offered to help disinfect some of our local police and fire departments. He has been to Amesbury, Rowley, Newberry, and West Newberry. He did a lot of this work in his own time, and I want to publicly thank him. As you know, on March 25th, Governor Baker has extended the school closure until May 4th. At this time, we have a rotating schedule with maintenance, security, and transportation cafeteria, where they're all working and providing service to our school and to our community. All staff will be taking April vacation off, including administrators, faculty, support staff, and maintenance. And I'm happy to say that our staff has embraced this time for remote learning with the priority of making sure our students' social needs are met. For the last few years, we have spent much of our professional development on technology and social-emotional learning. It has been great to see these initiatives being used during this time. We will continue to improve and make adjustments to the plan as the school closure continues. Again, I cannot be proud of everyone in our Whittier Tech community. We truly are Whittier Tech. Can I answer any questions?
Maureen, first of all, thank you for all that you and everybody else has done. I just can't understand, in my own, can't sometimes wrap my head around everything that's changed so much, but thank you.
It's been a journey, but really, when you realize what Whittier, what Whittier Community is all about, everyone has pulled together, and the teachers union, the maintenance staff, everybody has really come together, and it's been actually a pretty phenomenal experience.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Wow, that was easy.
Do you have a sense?
I read my answer.
Oh, there's another question out there, you guys.
Okay, Joanna True, what's up?
Oh, okay. I was just curious about bus drivers. How did that work when everything shut down? What, you said that they were continuing to work and just wondering what that?
Right, so they're helping with mail delivery for the Penn Tucket School District and for the OR students in the Penn Tucket School District.
Thank you.
Yep.
Maureen?
Yeah.
David, has the government finally talked about MCAS and what the disposition is this year?
Um, yeah, when I, when we have, we're basically having a Zoom meeting with the Commissioner every week or every other week or so right now. Is, he can't, he doesn't have the authority to not have the MCAS given at this point. He's working with the legislature to eventually have that authority, but as of now, he can't, he can't just say there will be no MCAS this year. Lisa?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the Penn Tucket School District of working with them to make sure that, you know, all the students of, you know, Merrimack and Groveland and West Newberry were able to receive, you know, lunches and breakfasts through Whittier Tech. It's greatly appreciated.
Yep. Dr. Bartholomew and Mr. Conway have been fantastic to work with, and it really is, you really, again, you go back to community, and everybody has just made the students the priority, and it's, it's been very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue on. The Student Opportunity Act on our website, it's posted on our website. If I can have the school committee take a look at that during your free time, if you have any, any questions or anything you want to add, there's a spot on the website for you to add information. It's originally going to be more of a discussion, but I want to try to get it all as to many of our community members as possible. So if you want to take a look at that and let us know, that would be great. And I'll bring that to you for a final vote at the school committee meeting. And now, oh, yeah, Kevin's going to put it on so you can see it.
Oh.
It's so nice that you're with us, Kevin. And then, now I'm going to turn it over to Patty Lowell to give a little update about admissions.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman Murphy, Superintendent Lynch, and members of the committee. I've shared with you our admissions report for the 2021 school year, the incoming grade nine class, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions out there?
This is a good night for Patty.
Yeah, Brent Dick-Early, I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Early.
Okay, Patty, you've accepted 393 for 350 seats. If it comes in that we have 365 kids, you'll be able to make room for them?
We will figure it out, yes.
Thank you.
Dope. It's all due to me, man. I love this stuff. I'm not going to come to Whittier again.
You're going to miss out the food. Think of the food.
Oh, yeah. You're right.
All right, is that it? Patty?
Thank you, Patty.
For me, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the principals update. Mr. Leganis.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and rest of the school committee. Just to kind of follow up a little bit on Maureen's timelines, on March 12th, we were scheduled to have our winter banquet, and we did not get a chance to thank everybody, and it was canceled for the sports. I just wanted to congratulate all our winter athletes and coaches, and special thanks to the Booster Club for putting in all that hard work for all the student athletes throughout the whole year, and who knows about what's going to happen moving forward. I also want to say congrats also goes out to all the students involved in the musical pipping for practicing all those long hours in the hallways and getting prepared. That was also canceled as well. And once again, during these unprecedented times, Whittier family continues to shine, as you heard from Superintendent Lynch. Our remote learning journey has been very, very successful, and I have to say, we are very lucky that the Whittier Tech students all have been issued the iPads, and this is five and a half years ago. We thank, I just want to thank, and we all thank Superintendent Lynch, the school committee yourselves, and the IT Director, Kevin Williams, for this. Who would have thought we'd be doing this, going home the 13th and not coming back and just going remotely? As a result, we're able to start this remote learning, like Superintendent Lynch said, around March 18th, and if you can believe next week, it's going to be five weeks into it. I just want to say thank you as we all continue to navigate through these unprecedented times together, and please stay safe, and please social distance, and we'll get through it, through this adversity. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Good job. Business Manager, Kara.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee. Before I begin my various analysis discussion, I just would like to give a shout out to our food service company, Whitson's. When I contacted them and said that we needed to feed our students, I have to say, within less than 24 hours, our food service director, Kevin Welch, and Whitson's, our food service management company, stepped right up and had emergency meals, and we had a plan in less than 24 hours. So it does take a village, and I wanted to recognize them because we could not have done it without them, so I'm very thankful for that. In your packet, you have a variance report. When I ran this report, I thought we would be back on April 4th, and at that time, we were pretty much right on task for nine months of school. Since then, obviously, there have been a lot of things that haven't been happening, so there will be quite a few savings and quite a few accounts at the year end that I anticipate. We're not running extra runs for buses. We're not doing a lot of the student activities that cost money, so we expect to have some balances. However, there are a lot of unknowns that we're also being faced with, expenditures that we are being faced with and can't predict right now, so hopefully, whatever we have in savings will be there for the things that are unknown, that we don't know at the end of the year. So I do expect that we will end this year very much in the positive, but it's going to be very different than I originally projected when, when I did this about three weeks ago. So I would entertain any questions?
I just wanted to make a comment in regard to the food service. It's been a fantastic job.
They have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Question? Thank you, Kara.
Thank you. That's all I have. Stay safe, everyone, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you, Kara.
Okay, moving on. Sheer person, the made gender items, appointment of subcommittees. We're going to delay this until the October meeting. We'd just like to keep the committees the way they are for now until we can all meet together, you know, in a more personal environment. The school calendar will be coming out, the superintendent's evaluation, and the new student Maureen, how will we work that? We'll just find out who she is. You'll tell us, and then in September, we'll meet that person?
He or she, I'll work with Mr. Leganis and the assistant principal about inappropriate.
All right.
Yeah.
Really?
The date for the reorganization of the committee. We'd like to put this off until September 30th at 5:30 PM due to what's going on right now in the world.
Can you get me a pencil? Sorry.
We need to take a vote on this to change this meeting until September 30th, the reorganization meeting.
Second. Gary James.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. LaBella?
Yes.
Mr. Irving?
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald? Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Ficcheri.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. I just have one thing to say. Um, on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to sincerely thank the administration, the faculty, and the students for their devoted and hard work in keeping Whittier Tech moving forward, um, in these difficult times. All your efforts are what makes Whittier strong, that's.
I second that, yes.
You're here.
You're here.
Yeah, I know it's a lot of work for everybody, and it's different, but doing it. Uh, subcommittee reports, executive. There's nothing that I know of, um, I don't know if there's a meeting or anything. Maureen?
Necessary right now, it could be later on as the, the month rolls on.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
All right, and we'll just do it, uh, with Zoom, I guess, right? Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
Um, we have obviously not met as well, and we usually have a fall meeting, but under the circumstances, I don't know whether Maureen wants to call something in regard to the fact that we've had to reorder all of our instructional methodology, et cetera. So I'll leave it to Maureen, and if she feels something is necessary for her to contact the subcommittee, and we will go from there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Brad, I think you've muted. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Got you now, Brad.
Oh. Uh, I was on plant operations. Tucker is not here, but I don't believe there is a need for a meeting at this time.
There is not at this time.
Okay. Salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
Nothing at this time.
Actually, I, I need to have a, um, salary subcommittee meeting for our Director of People Personnel, Patty Lowell. So if we could maybe have something, um, on April 28th?
Say that again, Maureen.
We need to have a, a meeting for Patty Lowell, Director of People Personnel, her contract ends this year.
What's on the 28th?
April 28th at 5:30, does that work?
I have a school committee meeting.
Um, then April 27th?
That's fine with me, Maureen.
Yeah.
At what time, 5:30?
Yes.
And you'll send out the link?
I will. Okay. Good for me, thank you.
Okay. Uh... Policy, Mr. Irving. Hey, we have not met, but I believe Maureen is gonna schedule a meeting.
Yes, we need to have a meeting. Um, could we do it on the same day at 6:00? April 27th?
We, we could.
Okay.
All right with me. Uh, could we have a, Lisa send out a hard copy of, uh, one of the policies we're looking at, so we can prepare to discuss?
Um, we can't really send out a hard copy, because that would mean us going into the building. Um, but Lisa and I are, are gonna work on a way to somehow get you the policies and, and as best as possible, but it is gonna have to be online.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, as long as we have something to look at.
Yep, we will make sure that that happens.
I have a question. Did we just, we just said April 27th at 6 o'clock for our policy?
Yes.
I, I think we've been receiving quite a bit of information from MASC, is that accurate?
There, there are a bunch of policies, yes.
February, we received a lot.
Yeah. A lot of them are just basically live. Um, but I want to make sure that we definitely, um, review any policies that have anything to do with our student parent handbook, so that that can be up to date.
Okay.
So there'll be a few meetings.
Thank you. Okay, we all sit on meetings right now?
Yes.
On, uh, uh, well, meeting dates, we gotta go on to meeting dates, so it's salary on April 27th at 5:30. Policy on 4/27 at 6 o'clock. The reorganization meeting is September 30th at 5:30.
Yes.
Okay, is that it for meetings?
That's it.
Maureen, okay. Uh, new business, there is no new business posted. There is no executive session posted. Your and Dave Irving.
I have a question.
Yes, LaBella.
Yeah, uh, this is for Kara. Is the, uh, completion of the track still on schedule?
Far as I know, I just don't know, you know, if we'll be able to go forward as scheduled based on what's going on now, but since it's July, um, I remain optimistic.
Okay.
Are they working on site now?
No, I think that they came once to, um, to look at, um, just the field and how it was doing, but I don't believe they've been on site since. They finished the job, and the intent was for them to start at the end of June, early July. So assuming that things change between now and then, I assume that they will start then, because I don't know whether their work schedule has been backed up by what's going on here, so it's like everybody's saying, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh... Your other business moved to adjourn.
Backed in.
Okay, we need a roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
LaBella.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
I want to thank everybody for making this as, uh, smooth as it turned out tonight, yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Ms. True.
Yes.
Mr. Ficcheri.
Yes.
Mr. LaSage.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, I think this went pretty good, considering.